Mitaaka biomazanike waniwa chichale chamalo tin kashira tin kashira unshi ahoya chichlo na nami chikomo tin kashira niyani wakan chana wama kana ohana unshi la ka ho na unshi ha ho Oh, also, I would like to ask if our uh Hokai chasha can sing us a a wocheke yalon at this time.
Oh.
Oh, wash te ' alon, wopilah. Oh, wopilah. Councilman Poyer, can you give us some words of encouragement?
Good morning. I ' d like to welcome everybody to Porcupine District and Porcupine School. Um, Frank the Creator for all the rain they were getting, so you need to enjoy it. Just have a good day and get some business done. Thank you.
Oh, wopilah. Secretary, roll call.
Sorry, Little.
Yeah.
Craig Dillon, Sonia Little Hawk Weston, your Garfield Steel, Tyler Lunderman.
here and I want to say good morning to all the people that are listening, all the people throughout Pine Ridge, the tribal office, BIA, all the all the workers. Just friendly reminders, council, um let ' s try to talk at once. I mean talk, not all talk at one time here and you could use your mic whenever you ' re voting so people could know your vote. And also wait on the we wait for the council to call excuse me the um to call on you. I know sometimes it gets he doesn ' t see everybody ' s hand go up so that but I just want to say wopilah for coming and as Mr. Councilman Poyer said, let ' s have a good meeting and try to do something good for betterment of our people. Wopilah. Thank you, Sergeant Arms. Also, I may add, you know, we ' re sitting at an angle here, so make sure I I look I look at you or staring at you to get your attention uh when you have a question. Um, also, uh, the secretary ' s office is gonna need some a little help here, so I would like to see if the the committee chairs can read the resolutions. Um, she ' s having a little difficult with her vision today. We can get the chairs to read the resolution, that ' d be great. Or designate someone in your committee. Thank you. Okay, so at this time, we ' ll move on to our honorings, and I ' m going to turn it over to the to the council reps, Porcupine District.
Okay, we ' ll go ahead and get started with bingo. First number is first letter is no, I ' m kidding. I ' m kidding. No. Um, good morning everyone. Uh, we ' ll get started here with our our honorings. Uh, first one we would like to start with is uh Unchi Valma Killsback. Let ' s give uh Valma a round of applause. Hoka.
Valma Killsback. Valma Killsback is an enrolled member of the Oglala Lakota Nation of Porcupine, South Dakota. Her traditional education began with her grandparents and mother who raised her in a Lakota speaking home. She was brought up with knowledge in her herbal herbal medicine, sae, and is known only to few. Ohun kankanka stories and traditional teachings of becoming a woman and a leader. She was taught the art of sewing, cooking, and butchering. Killsback entered the Western education system at the number sixteen BIA day school in Porcupine at age five. She went on to graduate from Oglala Community High School in Pine Ridge. She earned an Associate of Arts degree in education from Black Hill State College and a bachelor ' s degree in elementary education with a minor in Lakota studies from Oglala Lakota College. While employed as an early childhood special education coordinator, she received her master ' s degree in early childhood special education with emphasis in fetal alcohol syndrome, fetal alcohol effects. She furthered her education and received a master ' s of science degree in education administration. She was an elementary teacher for over forty years teaching regular education, special education, and alternative education, and taught four levels of language Lakota language courses at Oglala Lakota College. Lessons from Killsback ' s families allowed her to teach Lakota children the Lakota language and culture during their most crucial developmental years. Killsback and her friend and the friends started the movement to revitalize and sustain the Lakota language. They now partner with Thunder Valley Valley Community Development Corporation of Porcupine to ensure the continuation of traditional teachings, the language, the history and culture by utilizing elders from Cheyenne River, Rosebud, Standing Rock, Cissitan, and Oglala Sioux tribe. Killsback began her work at SDSU Brookings, South Dakota with the American Indian Studies and the Lakota Language Developing Program for Students. She helped in the development of two syllabides in the year twenty sixteen. She began her doctoral journey throughout the years. She worried with worked with Doctor Shardee Basit, Doctor Maro Forman, Doctor Sant, I think it ' s the Santas, and others in the Humanities Department. She was instrumental in six projects that was initiated by SDSU. Killsback wrote two proposals to help in the area of maps, tourism, and Lakota language. She was a part of seven initiatives from SDSU throughout the years. She has presented she has presented areas such as Fort Thompson in June of twenty twenty four, Crow Creek Tribe in June twenty twenty four, Otechti Shakowee Conference December twenty twenty three and twenty twenty four. Killsback also presented in Rapid City during the Memorial Day for the Flood of nineteen seventy two, speaking on resiliency of indigenous people. She has presented in the following topics: resiliency, cultural education, roles of traditional women, traditional foods, Lakota language, and revitalization and sustaining the language. She also helped perform kea ceremony, ishnalaki for girls. Um, Doctor Valma Killsback.
Let ' s give Valma a round of applause.
twenty twenty four, twenty twenty six, star comes out, muso administration in Aunt Valma Killsback. The Oglala Sioux tribe holds in high esteem tribal members who exemplify the Lakota qualities of courage,
her outstanding accomplishments in achieving a doctor of philosophy degree in letters and literature Humanities Department from South Dakota State University, Brookings, South Dakota. Her hard work and dedication demonstrate leadership and is an inspiration to the youth and oyate of the Ogl- of the Oglala Lakota Nation. Presented on this twenty seventh day of May, twenty twenty five, signed President Frank Star comes out, Oglala Sioux tribe. Again, let ' s give her a round of applause. We also have
Niyani Lefki, good morning. I thank all of you for showing this this recognition for me. It ' s been a long hard road. But in the end, it makes you feel feel really good. I ' ve done a lot of work in the language, in the culture, and our traditional roles of of our women. I did a lot of work in the humanities department. And so today, giving me this honor, I I really appreciate that. I know it ' s gonna be with me forever. Somebody asked me what next. I don ' t know. I ' ll probably stay at home now. But nevertheless, I am very thankful for for your recognition. And I intend, I intend to do, do whatever I I think I can for for the oyate. And again, um, I thank you. I ' m a grandmother and I ' m a great grandmother. And so I want to be a role model for our girls. Education cannot be taken away from you. Not even Trump, you can ' t take that away from you. And so I want to encourage each and every one of you, those that are here, you can do it. Whatever you you set your mind out to do, you can do it. Just like Mister Greenwald said, there ' s there ' s three of you, me, myself, and I. I did that. The long hours. I tell my granddaughter, she called me yesterday from Germany, and she said, Grandma, you did it. She said, I remember. Papa Tater used to tell you, grandma, it ' s four thirty in the morning, go to bed. That ' s how long I used to stay up. do in my papers. But I got it done. When I did my 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 residency last year in April, April twenty twenty four, I did my resident there at SDSU. I did a lot of work there. And one of the things that stood out for me at that time was a lady came from the whole Chag Nation and she told me this. She said, I do agree that she said, Oglala are very strong people. And she said, you are. You are a very strong person. And so I stand before all of you. You are the legislators of our nation. You are the eyes and the ears for our people. You think for our people. And so I just want to encourage all of you. Education is the key to success. So with that, I would like to say thank you to Tagola Tai and to Dave and to Star Ray. This administration. I thank all of you. I graduated on May tenth in um Brookings. I graduated a month five other doctors. And my and my degree is in the area of of the humanities department. And it says Doctor of Letters and Literature. That ' s what I graduated in.
Oh, wopilah, Unchi. Doctor Killsback, no edge. Next one I ' d like to have come up is Maurice Twist.
Maurice Deltwist. Maurice Deltwist was born and grew up on Cooney table with his parents, two brothers Lloyd and Louis, and a sister Helen. His younger years were spent watching and learning how to be a cowboy from his father ' s uncles and other members of his family who lived the cowboy life every day. Maurice is the youngest of four children that were all involved in rodeo from a very young age. Maurice ' s father Louis Twist was one of the premier calf ropers of the area and Maurice Walla Twist advocated that the children all be involved in rodeo. Entered in a boys ' tie down calf roping at an early age in Edma and Oryx, South Dakota.
part of his life, he was an accomplished calf roper and bull rider, participating in junior rodeo where he represented Shadron State College in nineteen sixty, he qualified for the national collegiate finals in bull riding. Maurice ' s love for rodeo
in conflict. He took several summers off to complete his educational requirements. He participated in different associations, including the PRCA, the Collegiate
and the Great Plains Rodeo Association, and the South Dakota Rodeo Association. In the later years of his rodeo career, he participated in the senior men ' s breakaway roping, where he had some of the most outstanding times recorded. A strong believer and supporter of rodeo, Maurice, Ro Branford, and Cole Twist started the Pine Ridge Reservation Studio Rodeo Skills Workshop and Rodeo. It was held for students at area schools and had an average of two hundred students. Eighteen consecutive years, many students developed their skills and later became successful rodeo competitors. Maurice was a coach for several years beginning in nineteen sixty one, coaching football, basketball, and track. While coaching the Oryx team, they achieved a seven two record, sending two students on to play college football. Jack Burgess played out here in college and was selected on the Little All American team, drafted by the Dallas Cowboys. While coaching at Glendale, Wyoming, several players were recognized for all state teams and later went on to college where they were starters for their school ' s teams. Glendale was rated number one in the state, class B until February and finished state in seventh in the state that year. Maurice is dedicated to the progressive development of the Pine Ridge Indian community throughout through educational process and success. He believes in providing a cultural based educational and personal support programs for Native American youth. Joining the two streams of education, Western and traditional, it is integral to the success of Native youth in mainstream society. Both systems are viewed as necessary assets to advance advance as healthy individuals, communities, and nations. Mister Twist is a member of the Oglala Sioux tribe with a B S in business education and a master ' s degrees in elementary psychology. Mister Twist has also had almost sixty years of continuous employment in education, thirty seven years at Oglala Lakota County School District. Some of his most notable accomplishments are helping over one hundred and twenty five local residents of the Pine Ridge Indian Reservation receive B S degrees in elementary education, helping many local residents receive M S degrees in education, thirty years of coordinated coordinating the Pine Ridge Reservation Rodeo School, thirty seven years of program development for students on the Pine Ridge Reservation, and he has served on numerous educational committees and boards on the local, state, and national levels. He also spent three years at the University of South Dakota during the early seventies. The function of the position was to design and implement a Native American counselor training program in the School of Education. This program was reviewed by the American Associations of Colleges for Teachers Education. The program was selected for the distinguished achievement award. Supplement training provided by the Center Satellite Program was leadership for minority education in the United States. This education opportunity provided a connection with the national education to co author and do a series of books on the current status of Native American education in several states in the Midwest, including Alaska. Mister Twist is no stranger to education and educational facilities. He was facilities, transportation, and maintenance director for Oglala Lakota School District for several years and coordinated and overseen the planning and construction at all four of their school sites. Mister Twist was also grant facilitated for OLCSD, and while in that position, he secured the funding for the school construction projects. He held that position for thirty seven years. Mister Twist started and has been planner for the Lakota Nation Education Conference and the SDABVE Conference for forty seven years. During those years, the Lakota Nation Educational Conference has grown from two hundred attendees to twelve hundred attendees, and this is the largest educational conference in the four state area. Some other special areas of expertise for Mister Twist include program development, proposal writing, curriculum and education, bilingual bicultural education, federal programs impacting and coordination of program and project.
Certificate of appreciation in honor of Maurice Twist. The Oglala Sioux tribe holds in high esteem tribal members who exemplify the Lakota qualities of courage, bravery, fortitude, generosity. Mister Maurice Twist was committed has committed thirty five years of dedicated service to the Oglala Lakota county schools. He was recognized recently by both the Association of School Boards of South Dakota and the school administrators of South Dakota for such loyal longevity and working as a school administrator. It is with great honor that the Oglala Sioux tribe honors Mister Maurice Twist with gratitude for his many years of dedicated service to the to the youth and oyate of the Oglala Lakota Nation. Signed, this uh twenty seventh day of twenty five, Frank Star comes out says, the Oglala Sioux tribe. Thank you, Mars.
Good morning to all. This is a great appreciation, and I I would like to begin with just appreciation of the Oglala Sioux tribe and the Porcupine District gentlemen that coordinated this. I think it ' s a great effort to recognize educators in our area, and I ' m very appreciative of that. I also want to recognize and just mention the appreciation I have for Paul Ironclad, one of the people that I ' ve known my entire life, and also through Harry Yegehold, both great friends of mine for entire lifetimes. So I appreciate that greatly, and also for my family, Terry, Joe Gibbons, my good friend sitting here, and my two daughters, Karen on the far side, Stan, would you please, Karen, and Donna, Stan, and then my granddaughter Charlie Trubood. Thank you so much for being a wonderful family. I can ' t I I Valma spoke and very eloquently of education and her position as an educator on the Pine Ridge Reservation, and I I took that to heart and and certainly support and encourage this body of legislators to support all education levels on the Pine Ridge Reservation. It is a way that we need to correct some of the illnesses that we have now in terms of of uh overdoses and 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 alcohol and drug usage, et cetera. Education is the key to a lot of successes, and I I fully would support any kind of programs that we can do to to continue that support. With that, I will I will um I will close, but uh I do thank you very much. It ' s a great deal of appreciation. And Councilman Lunderman, Councilman Poyer took the efforts to have this in Porcupine. I ' m sure that they were the the origins of some of this information, et cetera. So I do thank you too. It ' s very well appreciated. And also to Chairman, I saw him on TV this morning. He was he was up in in Fort Meade at the cemetery, and I was very proud that he was uh. I thank you all.
Oh, wash te ' alon.
Big, I apologize, Jada, check see. Uh, she ' s in a golf tournament now in Eastern South Dakota. She ' s daughter of Jay and Nikki Jacob. She ' s three time LNI champ, four time state qualifier, academic all state, as voted by the South Dakota Coaches Association. She signed to play golf at the D. Ron University of Maryland Eastern Shore. She ' ll be attending there this fall. Uh, thank you. She'll be telling you, there it is, boss. Thank you. I'll read her certificate. Certificate of Recognition, Jada Jacobs, Lilloon High School, twenty-twenty-five. Invitational Girls Golf Championship, twenty-twenty-five, SDHSAA State Golf Qualifier. Ogallamaw Sue tribe holds in high esteem tribal members who have amplified the qualities of courage, bravery, fortitude, generosity. Ogallamaw Sue tribe hereby recognizes and honors the above-named youth for hard work, dedication, and success, each achievement. Jada Jacobs has brought pride and honor to the Pine Ridge Reservation. She is the founder, stewardess, leader of the leadership in the creation of a nice community in the property of Ogallala Lakota Nation. Signed, this is twenty-seventh day of May, twenty-five, nine, first of May, twenty-five. Thank you. Okay, at this time, I'd like to call upon our Hokkawee Chacha again for a honoring song. Oh, whoopie lo. So at this time, we have another honoring, and I'll turn it over to the Wakbomni representative.
Thank you, President. Star comes out and to the council, also to our visiting audience today and also on Zoom. But today, from the Wakbomni District and our Executive Board of Wakbomni District, we'd like to do three honorings today. And I'd like to, yeah, yeah. Before we get started with our honorings, Mr. President, we'd like to take a moment of silence today in memory of one of our colleagues that sat in this circle with us at one time, Mr. Vincent Woodsy Tulamps, Jr. Just like a moment of silence in his memory. Thank you. You know, we'd like to present the first certificate of appreciation, and this certificate is proudly given to Ms. Alice Perkins. This certificate is presented in recognition of your courageous actions which helped save an elder's life. Your quick thinking, compassion, and dedication embody the highest ideals of kindness and service to others. With deepest gratitude, the Wakbomni District and the Ogallamaw Sue tribe presents this certificate on May twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-five. Signed, Frank Star comes out, President Ogallamaw Sue Tribe, and Mary Tobacco, President Wakbomni District. And before I go on to the next certificate, I just want to say a few words to start this honoring off on behalf of and honor of this elderly that was very, I guess, a very tragic happening the day, might have been about, what, two weeks ago? May eighth, and right there, we lost a home that belonged to one of our elderly in Wakbomni District, Mr. Ed Shu. And today, we just want to remember him in our prayers today because he is still recovering, and it's going to be probably a while before he really fully recovers. And so today, on behalf of the Ogallamaw Sue tribe in Wakbomni District, we'd like to keep him in our prayers today. But I want to turn over the microphone over to one of his daughters. She wants to say a few words before we go on to the next certificate.
Just want to thank everybody for making this happen for us today to be able to say thank you to the people who helped my dad. If it wasn't for them and their fast thinking, we could have lost him very easily. And we are very grateful that our dad is still here with us because of their actions. And we're also, he's also very thankful. He wanted us to let you guys know how grateful he is and how thankful he is for you guys to save his life. It's hard to lose your home, your family home. It's hard to lose all your memories or your memorabilia stuff, your pictures. But we're very thankful that our dad is still with us. And because of their compassion, their empathy, and their humanity, they saved our dad, and we will forever be grateful.
With that, you know, it was a very stressful day, and it was a miracle. It was a miracle because my sister did call me, and she said, there's a trailer, there's a home on fire. She said, you know, so I just went down there because she just felt like something was making her go over there. She seen some smoke, and she thought, wow, I don't think they're burning trash because it's kind of a windy day. So she said, I just went down there to see for sure because there was no cars there. And she said, when she got close, she seen that smoke, so she started honking her horn as she was going down and just, you know, trying to wake somebody up or alert them. And all this time, the elder, you know, the family, I don't want to mention names, but, you know, he was asleep, and it woke him up when she was honking the horn. So when she got there, he opened up the door, and she told him, you know, your home's on fire. He was yelling. And by that time, the officer pulls in, and that's Mr. Mark, Officer Mark Mesteth. So with that too, you know, Mr. Mesteth came in to assist, and he was the first responder there. So you want to read that?
So our next honoree is Ms. Officer Mark Mesteth. Certificate of Appreciation, this certificate is proudly given to Officer Mark Mesteth. This certificate is presented in recognition of your courageous actions which helped save an elder's life. Your quick thinking, compassion, and dedication embody the highest ideals of kindness and service to others. With deepest gratitude, the Wakbomni District and Ogallamaw Sue Tribe presents this certificate on May twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-five. Signed, Frank Star comes out, President Ogallamaw Sue Tribe, and Mary Tobacco, President Wakbomni District. And we have one more honoree, but we were told that she is not here today, but we still want to mention her name and read her certificate also. It's a certificate of appreciation. This certificate is proudly given to Anna Balecki, EMT. This certificate is presented in recognition of your courageous actions which helped save an elder's life. Your quick thinking, compassion, and dedication embody the highest ideals of kindness and service to others. With deepest gratitude, the Wakbomni District and Ogallamaw Sue Tribe presents this certificate of appreciation on May twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-five. Signed, Frank Star comes out, President Ogallamaw Sue Tribe, and Mary Tobacco, President Wakbomni District.
Yeah, I just want to mention that the EMT that we just recognized here was actually on the walking track by the old IHS, and she was walking. And when she seen what was happening and all the smoke, she just came running across the field to assist and see what was going on, you know, and she aided the elder with all she can do as an EMT. So, you know, want to recognize her for that, for really running across the fields, you know, that was really something. But, you know, with that, you know, thank you, everyone.
Our family would also like to thank Mary and Jackie for coming and reaching out to us. And no default of yours because her sister was there, but.
She was my sister-in-law.
Yeah. But also to mention Monica Weston, we really want to thank her because despite Alice reaching out to my sister, who never answers her phone, Monica reached out to Thetna, and she was in Fort Collins. So with that, she was able to let us all know so we could be there. Without everybody working together and helping, it's like Steve Wilson reached out to our family and showed up. And it's just really truly amazing how much compassion people have. And, you know, again, we're just really grateful.
Thank you. I just want to give the microphone over to Alice. I think also our president of the district wants to say a few words too.
Good morning, everyone. I'd like to say thank you to all of you for doing this for us today. I keep going back in my mind all this that happened, and I'm glad that I pulled in when I did. I'm glad I saw what I saw and reacted, because you don't think about it. I look at all the houses every time I'm driving. I say, I'm not that Snoopy, but, you know, but I'm glad I did that day. And everything that goes through my mind when that happened, I thank the officer here for showing up because it would have turned out worse. It really would have. When the EMT lady came, she was quick. She went up and assisted right away. I was worried about the little fur family, you know, the dogs they had. They jumped in my car and they found a safe place. So it was really, I don't wish that on anyone, anything like that to happen. And I think people should take precautions. Like to thank our district reps here and Mary and our executive board, and thank all of you again.
Good afternoon, Thai and Porcupine District. Thank you for giving us time. And the drum group, thank you for the beautiful honoring songs for, to me, they're my heroes. And I'm grateful every day for, on behalf of the Mariville Cooney Clan, big clan in our district. And to our leaders, Sonia, Jackie, Jackie walked by me that same day, and she smelled like smoke. So she was down at the scene too, as soon as she heard that this was happening. And for all the listeners, I offer our condolences because there's been a lot of loss in all of our districts. And I'm grateful for this really beautiful story that we can share today. And I say this about Alice, she has a really caring spirit because the dogs that jumped in her car were watchdogs, so they're kind of fierce. And they ran to her car for safety. And, uh, they ran to her car for safety, and they, they, they stayed in her car. So she has a really beautiful spirit. And, and Officer Mark too, thank you for having that courage. And Tribal Council, thank you for giving us this time this morning.
Thank you, Council. Um, I think we'd like to have our honorees over here at the chairs and ask for an honor song.
Okay, at this time, Councilman London.
Thank you to our singers for, for the songs. Um, before we move on, I would just like to, um, remember all the relatives that, that, uh, that lost loved ones. And, um, and also I want to remember, um, my grandfather, um, Paul Ironcloud Senior, and also our, our leadership that I've passed on, um, and made their journey. And so at this time, I would like to ask, uh, uh, our Hokkawee Chasha, again, our singers, if they could sing, uh, uh, the Chief Ironcloud Song and remember our, our loved ones at this time.
Ahoh, a wopilal, oh, hatchet, oh.
Ah, wopilal.
Okay, moving on to our next agenda item. We, uh, well, before we prove the agenda, do we have any two-thirds? Councilman Poyer.
Chair, Land Committee has one ordinance of Ogallala Sioux Tribal Council, Ogallala Sioux Tribe to prohibit unauthorized land disturbance activities on or around the wounded knee massacres. That, a motion.
Okay, motion by Councilman Poyer. Second by Councilman Randall. Secretary, call for the vote.
Anna Halverson?
Yes.
Could you use your mic, please?
Yes.
David Kelly?
Yes.
Tyler Londonman? Sonia Little Hawk Weston?
Ah.
Bo Little White Man?
Yes.
David Poyer?
Yes.
Julianne Spotted Bear?
Yes.
Lyle Weston?
Yes.
Jeremy Rosales?
Yes.
Norman Standing Soldier?
Yes.
Richard Greenwald Senior?
Yes.
Blaine Little Thunder?
Yes.
Beef Randall?
Yes.
James Cross?
Yes.
Craig Dillon?
Yes, yes.
Troy Little?
Yes.
George Dreamer Junior?
Yes.
Jackie Sears?
Oh huh.
Okay, uh, we need to recognize Councilman Cross at 11:20. Also, uh, 18, yes, unanimous motion carried.
I have one more. On page three, the first one, under the land resolution of Ogallala Sioux Tribal Council, Ogallala Sioux Tribe to support motion, move the present highway 18 curb and gutter. That one, take that off the agenda. We do whatever in writing to take that off. Thank you. Motion.
Okay. Well, you know. Okay, I don't think you need a motion to take it off. Okay. All right, thank you. Thank you, Land Committee. Councilman Weston.
Uh, thank you, Chair. Um, OST Law and Order Committee has, uh, one resolution, two, uh, two more items. The resolution of the Ogallala Sioux Tribe Tribal Council of the Ogallala Sioux Tribe authorizing the employment agreement between the Ogallala Sioux Tribe and annual means for the OST Department of Public Safety Chief of Police position. Motion.
Motion by Councilman Weston. Second by Councilman Standing Soldier. Call for the vote.
Anna Halverson?
Yes.
David Kelly?
Yes.
Tyler Londonman? Sonia Little Hawk Weston?
Ah.
Bo Little White Man?
Yes.
David Poyer? Julianne Spotted Bear?
Yes.
Lyle Weston?
Yes.
Jeremy Rosales?
Yes.
Norman Standing Soldier?
Yes.
Richard Greenwald Senior?
Yes.
Blaine Little Thunder?
Yes.
Beef Randall?
Yes.
James Cross? Craig Dillon?
Yes.
Troy Little?
Yes.
George Dreamer Junior?
Yes.
Jackie Sears?
Oh huh.
Councilman Cross, your mic. 18, unanimous, motion carried.
That's all from Law and Order Committee, Chair. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Councilwoman Little Hawk Weston?
To our Chair, uh, Mr. Weston, are we two-thirds seeing the other two that rock?
I didn't see anything in the packet.
Native American Rights Fund, and I think our attorney has her hands up.
Oh, that one's on the tur- okay.
Yeah, we needed, uh, so Samantha Blackie from Narve wanted to give an update, and also Tim Purdon from, uh, Robbins and Kaplan wanted to give Council an update as well. So if we could add them to the agenda.
Yeah, sorry. Um, yeah, I forgot, uh, rea- Yeah, that'd be my request, Chair.
Thirded on?
To add them on.
Yeah, I'll second.
Okay, motion by Council West, Councilman Weston, second by Councilwoman Little Hawk Weston. Secretary, call for the vote.
Anna Halverson?
Yes.
David Kelly?
Yes.
Tyler Londonman?
Yes.
Sonia Little Hawk Weston?
Ah.
Bo Little White Man?
Yes.
Bo?
Yes.
David Poyer?
Yes.
Julianne Spotted Bear?
Yes.
Lyle Weston?
Yes.
Jeremy Rosales?
Yes.
Norman Standing Soldier?
Yes.
Richard Greenwald Senior?
Yes.
Blaine Little Thunder?
Yes.
Beef Randall?
Yes.
James Cross?
Yes.
Craig Dillon?
Yes.
Troy Little?
Yes.
George Dreamer Junior?
Yes.
Jackie Sears?
Oh huh.
18, unanimous, motion carried. Okay, anything else? Okay. All right, you guys are a tough crowd this morning. Motion to approve the agenda.
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Londonman, second by Councilman Weston. Secretary, call for the vote.
Okay, thank you. Anna Halverson?
Yes.
David Kelly?
Yes.
Tyler Londonman?
Yes.
Sonia Little Hawk Weston?
Ah.
Bo Little White Man?
Yes.
David Poyer?
Yes.
Julianne Spotted Bear?
Yes.
Lyle Weston?
Yes.
Jeremy Rosales?
Yes.
Norman Standing Soldier?
Yes.
Richard Greenwald Senior?
Yes.
Blaine Little Thunder?
Yes.
Beef Randall?
Yes.
James Cross?
Yes.
Craig Dillon?
Yes.
Troy Little?
Yes.
George Dreamer Junior?
Yes.
Jackie Sears?
Oh huh.
Oh huh.
Eighteen, unanimous motion carried. At this time, do we have any districts? Here. Okay, uh, Councilman Greenwald.
Chair, I have an elder that wants to address the Council. Her name is Angie Taylor Yellowboy.
Okay. Uh, can't see her. Okay, can we give her a mic? Maybe, maybe right by you, uh, Councilman Greenwald, or at the end?
Thank you very much. I'm sorry I'm so slow, but when you're old, you're slow, but you get there. Um, my name is Angie Taylor, and I'm from Crawford. Um, Crawford, Nebraska. I'm pretty sure you know where that's at, Fort Robinson, you know? Anyway, uh, the reason I'm here today, um, uh, was a couple of months ago, I came to ask for some commodities at the commodity building and, um, and they told me to fill out papers, so I filled out application and, um, and they took it in the back, and then they came back and told me that, um, they, they couldn't give me no commodities because I lived in Crawford. And they said they don't recognize Crawford. And so I used to get them before, and so I told them I did. I said, I, I used to get these before, and I would come and get them, and they would let me have them, and, and, uh, but she said, "Well, we got new laws now that we can't give you anything and can't help you." And so I said, "Okay." So I, I just, uh, left, and then, um, there was some time in the back, years ago, not years, but a cou- like January or so, I really needed help on my electricity, my electricity and my rent. And so I called over, and, uh, they said, "Call the Energy." So I ca- I went over. I called them first, and then I went over. And then they, um, looked at my application, and they said, "No, go back to Shatteran, and Shatteran will help you." And so I went back to Shatteran and filled out papers there, and they said, "Go to Pine Ridge. Pine Ridge will help you." And so I thought, you know, where do you go? Where does a person go if you're refused, you know, from Pine Ridge and also from Shatteran? And so I didn't bother with it. I just went and borrowed money and paid my bills. Well, from that time on, I've been managing to pay, keep up my bills and rent and stuff. So, um, I don't know why, you know, I'm an enrolled, I'm an enrolled member. And, uh, I know that people in Rapid City get commodities, and they do get help with their rent and stuff, so I don't know if it's just because of who I am, or because I'm old, or what, but I don't, you know, that part, I don't understand. So, um, I'm not saying that, you know, I'm not asking for anything today from you for my rent or my electricity or anything like that, or commodities, because I can live without it. But the only thing I wanted was buffalo meat. They have buffalo meat they were giving away, so I wanted some buffalo meat. And I was brought up, you know, old traditional ways by my great-grandma and a great-great-grandmother. In fact, my great-great-grandmother escaped from Fort Robinson when they, uh, had the Cheyenne outbreak. She was one of the young girls that escaped from there. And so that's why I live in Crawford. My folks just stayed around Fort Robinson, and that was our home. But we're, our home, our family is clear back to before Fort Robinson was a fort or Crawford was a town. My family lived from way back then, the Sioux and the Cheyenne. My dad is Sioux, and he comes from the Yellow Boy family. So, you know, I grew up in Powwows because my dad loved Powwows, so I grew up hearing Powwow songs and all of this, and I was a, I danced from the time I could walk. So, uh, you know, I'm just, I'm just old traditional, from an old traditional family. But I brought a, um, I do, I and another lady back, I, it's been like eight years now we've been doing this. We started a Wachibee there in Crawford City Park. First, uh, me and my brother started one in Fort Robinson years ago. And, and, um, we got that going pretty good and everything, but my brother got sick, so we had to dissolve that. But in Crawford, I and another lady started another Wachibee down at the city park. And we just invited everybody and everything, but when COVID broke out, um, it kind of fizzled out. Nobody would come because everybody was afraid of COVID nineteen at the time. And I don't blame anybody because it was, a lot of people died, even in Crawford. And so, um, I never caught it, and all this time, I, I never caught COVID. And so, um, I just, uh, I, I, when we started the Wachibee, I was so happy to, um, do this because to me, in the old ways, we used to have, um, you know, Thanksgiving Powwows where we were happy that we come through s- it was kind of like a victory dance because we come through, um, a lot of wars that we survived through and a lot of diseases that come through the area among our people, and we survived that, and, uh, so I come from way back then. I grew up in a tent in Crawford at the city park where they had all of the Indian village, they called it. So this is way before all of your time, you know? And, um, so I grew up in a tent, and, um, it was really cold, very cold in wintertime. And so I had earache all the time, me and my sister, and, um, I lost my hearing. So the part, from that time that I could, uh, walk and stuff, I didn't have any, I couldn't hear. So I couldn't go to school because I couldn't hear the teachers or anybody. But nobody knew that I was deaf. So I come along that way, and I went to school as far as I could go because I couldn't hear. There was no hearing aids for the children back then. But, you know, um, I managed to work in Crawford. It was a really hard place to grow up. I mean, it was tough. Prejudice was really bad. I remember the bars where they had signs on the windows, "No Indians Allowed." The cafes had "No Indians Allowed," and I was just a little girl. But I walked through that town, and I would see that, but I grew up there. I loved the beauties around Crawford. Seemed like, it seemed like I was connected to the beauties with my, my people. That was buried, some of them are buried there, and some got killed. But, um, I just loved the area. So I wanted to go back and be thankful for what I learned from my past with my great-grandmothers because they taught me a lot. They knew that I was deaf, so they used sign language to me, or talk in my ear. But, um, I didn't go to school to learn anything. All of you are really smart, all of you. You went to high school, you graduated. Some of you went to college. Some of you graduated college, and you went on, and you did, you're doing great things for the whole tribe, for the whole reservation of South Dakota here. And that, and you should be proud of yourself because you're accomplishing a ver- a lot. And your, your children are looking at you, and your grandchildren, if you have grandchildren. I come from a fifth-generation, um, grandchild. And so I just, I just wanted to ask you today if you could help us in some way with the, uh, I got, I don't know if you have my, um, the things that we had laid out, you know, for our budget. But we only got, um, you know, uh, just a small amount of money. It's, we always get more, but with the, uh, economy as it is, it's really kind of hard for people to donate to us anymore. And, uh, it's hard to get even, uh, the grant money. They have cut it way low this year. And so we haven't got, even some of us, some of them already have denied us. But this, this year, I wanted to bring back the Powwow or the Wachibee, however you understand it, that the children, the little children that we have today, I wanted them to see what it meant to be in a circle, what that circle meant to us. Uh, us that have, uh, are still alive, I know, uh, from way back when Custer was alive, no, but when, uh, our folks, our grandparents were alive, that the circle really means a lot. It really means, uh, a spiritual meaning for all tribes. So I wanted to bring our little children, you know, to learn the sound of the drum. Because even that, the sound of the drum, it has to go with when they're dancing. And when they're dancing, the bells and the drum go together. I learned all of this from way back when my dad was dancing because he really, he was a champion dancer, and he danced all over. He even went to New York. He danced in the Madison Square Garden. So he went all over as a young man representing the Ogallaws here. And so this is what I wanted to bring back and instill into our children that are now, because now we have technology that's really, really, to me, it's leading our children away from our old ways. And maybe we won't ever have our old ways, you know, with the technology as it is. You look at this thing they call AI, and it changes stuff. And, you know, it's scary. It really is when you think about it because it's changing our children's mind to the technology, and maybe they need it. I don't know that part of that educational feel on our children growing up. But it would be good to have them learn from the old ways, to keep on dancing the way they do. And some of them are really good dancers, if you ever go to Powwows. So this year, I just wanted to ask you if you could give us a donation to help fund it. We, we will give these children money back. It's not going to go for us. The ones that are helping me are all non-Indans. And, um, it's kind of hard, but it's kind of hard for me to explain our Indian ways a lot of times. But it seems like even that is disappearing. But I wanted to ask you, uh, uh, all of my people that helped me are, are volunteers. They don't ask for money. Even today, they volunteered to give us gas money to come over. So this lady brought me over, and she's been a great help for me, too. So I just, I want to ask you if you could help us, and all of this money will probably come back to the reservation because we're going to pay them, you know, first, second, third place. And, um, um, I just want to invite you to come to see it, too. Come, bring your grandchildren, and let them dance, and let them see what it is. And there is, um, Lakota men that will lead it. So, uh, I just ask you if you would, you know, look in your heart and see what you can help us with. And we went, I appreciate it very much. And thank you. Thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you. Thank you for coming. Any questions? Go ahead, Councilman Kelly.
Good. Afternoon, everybody. I'm glad, uh, we're all here, sitting here today. You know, uh, she, uh, she brought up a good question because I keep getting, uh, some requests coming off the reservation also for the assistance, and uh, Chairman, you know, uh, we wrote that grant for the local food purchase, uh, program, and we received a substantial amount of money to, to buy local produce and buffalo and beef and, and turkey and everything else that we could. And we extended that when we wrote it to a four hundred mile now, or four hundred mile radius. But for the elderly lady that came all the way from Crawford to be denied, I remember writing in that grant, we, we didn't put a destination as to how far we will reach with it, because I know, and she brought up the fact that there has been distribution sites in Rapid City to help our membership up there. But for her to be denied, you know, we're talking about two different programs, you know, we got the food distribution, and then we got the local food purchase program. It'd be, uh, be wise to, uh, call Mr. Little and ask him why she was denied. You know, for a long time, and I've heard it here on Council, we, uh, we use their enrollment numbers to help build our funding here onto reservation, even though she lives off the reservation, I th- I, I think she should be entitled to at least some of the buffalo meat that she requested because I'm, I'm pretty sure we got plenty of it, or that, or the parks can step in and assist in that manner also.
Yeah, we can reach out to Mr. Little.
The, the other thing is, you know, I'm a, I'm a Powwow bum. I've, uh, lived that lifestyle since it wasn't even, wasn't even cool to dance. I've been out there. You know, all my children, now my grandchildren are, are being raised the same way. But, uh, I do know we, uh, we took some action here about a week, week and a half ago to distribute what little money we had within our Ogallawasoo Nation Powwow budget to the nine districts, and, and there was, if I remember correct, Treasurer, there was a hundred and forty thousand there. And each district got ten thousand, which left a little bit remaining. And I'm gonna always, you know, encourage cultural activities, and, and she's referring to the youth. I'm wondering, Treasurer, is there, uh, anything there we can assist with? Maybe, maybe half based on her budget?
There was, um, a hundred and thirty thousand in the budget, and we're giving ninety thousand to the districts. That's ten thousand each. So that would leave forty thousand. And, um, at the last finance meeting, there was a budget brought for forty thousand for the royalty. It wasn't approved, though. So, um, if you do help with part of that forty thousand, um, that's, that's up to you. But remember when we discussed having this year, um, not having the Powwow this year? We were going to use that forty thousand to, um, move- We were going to use that 40,000 to move the powwow grounds to a more open space so it could be secured better. But I guess it's up to you.
Councilman Randall.
I just want to make a comment to the, the young lady who spoke eloquently. Her vocabulary was brilliant. And she made me proud that an elderly lady can stand forward and have such vocabulary and speak so well and think so much of the youth. And she reminded me of my mother. So that said, I'm, I can get her my address and stuff. My family will donate $500 in honor of Marie Randall. So I want to say that to you for representing the elder and the youth. Young lady Angie, I say wopilaw to you for that. Well, I'll, I'll give you $500 for my Randall family from ISO. Oh, thanks.
Oh, wopilaw. Councilman Greenall.
Thank you Beef, that was very well said and it's spot on. It was very refreshing to have an elder, not necessarily from my community, but like, like she said, she's grown up in Crawford, Nebraska and really doesn't have ties to any one of our particular districts. I mean, she's related to probably a lot of the people from Akomani District. And she came to me and asked for the floor and I'm glad I did because it was really refreshing to hear somebody like her speak. That being said, Chair, maybe you go work with the Chief of Staff. You know, I wouldn't ever, ever want to have this ever come to our floor again to where any of our members of the Oglala Sioux Tribe elder ever goes to our commodity building and is turned away. Ever. I don't care where they live, where they come from, they're Oglala, no matter what first. And when they come in and ask perhaps, like, like she came all the way from Crawford. She had to get donations to get here, things like that, to be turned away like that is really hurtful. It hurts my heart to hear that. And so I, I would like for, for you guys to check on that and see that that never happens again to another elder of our nation. And to Cora and whatever finance committee you guys could do, whatever you could do to help out with this powwow, that'd be great. We do have a lot of tribal members that live in Crawford, Nebraska. Some of them you might not even know are, are tribal members, but they are. The Clements, the Clements family, my Uncle James Clements, worked the railroad over in Crawford, Nebraska for, for years and his mother was Nancy Hat. And they had numerous kids like back, back in the day, like all of our parents had a lot of kids. And now their Takojas and Great Takojas and great, great grandchildren are living in Crawford, Nebraska to this day. And those are the ones that go to these powwows and that, you know, celebrate the Fort Robinson thing, Crazy Horse, all that stuff. So just keep in mind that when we take a look at a request that we do have a lot of tribal members in Crawford and they do put up with a lot of negativity sometimes from the, the white community. But Crawford has come a long way since then too. There, there's a lot of people that do support the native community there as well, but I just wanted to share that. And I hope we never have an elder have to come and say they were turned away at our commodity building ever again. Thank you.
Councilwoman Spotted Bear.
Thank you Chair. It's unfortunate that we had one of our elders come here and talk about the fact that the government assistance that was promised to our people for a peace treaty that was written in 1868 for us to stop fighting the government and to be told no from these government assistance today is really saddening to sit here and hear that. And I agree with Councilman Greenall that there, at no time should our elder be turned away from any assistance when they come to us. Our elders should be protected and preserved because they carry a lot of wisdom and knowledge that we're losing. And when we, when we talk about, when we talk about that, we should mean that in a whole, in a whole way, in a, in a holy. And we have a resource office and I know we talk about, you know, keeping it on the reservation, but for the elder assistance, that should be met for all of our elders. And she shouldn't be turned away from the resource office as well. And she should be entitled to that as an elder because we should be protecting our elders. And so she should be able to be entitled to apply for that as well. And I just want to encourage that resource office to consider that when she comes to your office. And that goes for all of our elders. We can't forget that we have community members that live in a panhandle. I know we always look to Rapid City all the time, but we have community members that live in a panhandle as well. And I, when she was telling her, when she was talking about Crawford, I was thinking about, you know, our relatives who did our, the Brulee, the Cheyenne and the Lakota who lived in the Beaver Walls and who gathered there and had their last sundance. And I was talking to Councilman Cross about that before everything happened with Chief Crazy Horse. And, you know, and it just, I was listening to her speak so eloquently about the history of it and I was picturing the history that I learned of that area as she spoke and what our people went through and the livelihoods that were disrupted and what brought us to where we're at today. And I, you know, if the motion is made to support the powwow, I fully support that because, you know, we're all about healing, I'm about healing. And if it means bringing our people back to, to where our, our, one of our most respected chiefs loved, prayed and preserved our, our culture, our history and fought and loved our people the most, I support that. Wopilaw, thank you.
Councilwoman Little Hawk Weston.
Thank you President, don't want to drag it on, but you know, I think, just want to say also thank you to our elderly, you know, coming forward this morning, you know, and I was talking to my colleague a few minutes ago before Mr. Randall spoke. And I did say the same thing, you know, she's at her age, you know, she really has spoken eloquently. She has a good English, you know, really spoke well this morning and that really made us feel good that we have elderly's like that, that can do that, come forward to us. But you know, on, I was getting messages too, you know, from my family, you know, we're descendants of our great warrior Crazy Horse Hashunka Witko, the Little Hawk Tiospaya. And I know that Mr. Dillon is also a part of that. But I think that on our behalf of the Little Hawk Tiospaya, we could, we'll also donate, you know, some money towards their powwow. And I will get with my, my family and we will discuss that. And we will meet with the, is it Angie? This Yellow Boy, and we will let her know that. But on our family's behalf, we'll do that. I think on the other part of it is, I think that this is a, probably a finance committee item. And I know we said we don't want to do anything right now, but I think we could forward this back to the finance committee this week. I think the committee could address it there because the powwow isn't till the end of June. So I think we can maybe do that. And it's up to us as tribal leaders to change the policy of the resource office. It's not set in stone like we said before. And I want to thank our council from last administration that really pushed hard for the resource office. And also thank my colleague here, Ms. Sears, Councilwoman Sears. She's the one that always brought up the resource office. And now we finally have the resource office in place. So I want to give her thanks for that this morning and want to say that we can change it, but it's this governing body that has to change it. So we can do that at the finance committee. So I want to just maybe make a motion to forward this budget to our finance committee this week.
Okay, motion by Councilwoman Little Hawk Weston, second by Councilman Lunderman. Again, I just wanted to say a quick comment, you know, and thank you for bringing that up. It is a committee action item. It should be taken back there to discuss. But one thing, you know, some, there's, there's events that also happen over there at Fort Robinson. Maybe they can incorporate those events in honor of maybe Chief Crazy Horse. And you know, the, the Cheyenne, Cheyennes, Northern Cheyennes also do a ceremony over there every year. I've been participating past three years with that breakout run. Maybe they can incorporate something like that and start something over there on behalf of the people that, that, that suffered over there or, or died. So something to think about. Councilman Dreamer.
Thank you Chair. Ms. Yellow Boy would like to, from the Dreamer family, would also like to make a monetary donation to your powwow event. So I just want to get with you and after this and get your information. And I just want to say thank you for what you're doing and at your age, it's an inspiration to have that kind of energy. And I just want to say thank you again for coming and prayers on the, on the trip back home. Thank you.
Okay, so we got motion on floor. Secretary, call for the vote.
Anna Halverson?
Yes.
David Kelly?
Yes.
Tyler Lunderman?
Yes.
Sonia Little Hawk Weston? Bo Little White Man?
Yes.
David Poyer?
Yes.
Julianne Spotted Bear? Lyle Weston?
Yes.
Jeremy Rosales?
Yes.
Norman Standing Soldier?
Yes.
Richard Greenwald Senior?
Yes.
Blaine Little Thunder?
Yes.
Beef Randall?
Yes.
James Cross?
Yes.
Craig Dillon?
Yes.
Troy Little?
Yes.
George Dreamer Junior?
Yes.
Jackie Sears?
Uh huh.
Eighteen unanimous motion carried. Okay, there's no more district items, we'll move on. Oh, sorry.
Real, just real quick in closing, her name is Angie Taylor, her maiden name is Yellow Boy. And I want to thank council for listening to our, one of our elders today and giving her the time of day she deserved and thank her for traveling all this way to come meet us. Thank you.
Councilman Little White Man? Here's your mic.
Yes, we got one from Medicine Root. Was waiting on a second, but I don't know where it got, if it got lost anywhere. Okay, well, we just got the one.
Okay.
Okay, so I read it. It's the resolution of the Medicine Root District to distribute 41% of the gross revenue taxes from the marijuana funds to all nine districts for economic development and community development projects. Skip down to the fourth, whereas, whereas the Medicine Root District requests 41% of all, of the gross marijuana revenue to be distributed to each of the nine districts in a fair distribution formula according to district censuses. And where, whereas districts have asked, have been tasked with development of economic development plans, self-sustaining community projects and homeless plans. And whereas the revenue will be used for, for the districts to create infrastructure and thriving communities. Therefore be it resolved, the Medicine Root District requests 41% of gross marijuana revenue to be distributed to each of the nine districts certification.
Motion?
Motion.
Motion, okay, motion by Councilman, the White Man seconded by Councilman Rosales. Councilman Poyer.
You know, I thought in finance, we said that the marijuana money, it has to go back to reimburse the general fund. And now what, we're going to take it out of general fund and give this back? Distribute? I mean, I think this needs to go to finance for further discussion. I'm motioning to table and send to finance.
Okay, motion to table by Councilman Poyer, seconded by Councilman Standing Soldier. Secretary, call for the vote.
Anna Halverson?
No.
David Kelly?
No.
Tyler Lunderman?
Yes.
Sonia Little Hawk Weston?
Ah.
Bo Little White Man?
No.
David Poyer?
Yes.
Julianne Spotted Bear? Lyle Weston?
Yes.
Jeremy Rosales?
No.
Norman Standing Soldier?
Yes.
Richard Greenwald Senior?
Yes.
Blaine Little Thunder?
Yeah, no.
Beef Randall?
No.
James Cross?
Yes.
Craig Dillon?
Yes.
Troy Little?
Yes.
George Dreamer Junior?
No.
Jackie Sears?
Uh huh.
Ten yes, seven no, one not voting. A motion carried.
Chair, I got one more.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay. Resolution of the Medicine Root District rescinding the 2% right to work fee. Skip down, whereas the right to work fee has not been implemented equally to all entities conducting business within the exterior boundaries of the Pioneerage Reservation. And whereas the taxation is unfair to tribal employees and contract schools who pay, who pay the tax. And whereas the Medicine Root District does hereby request the rescinding of the 2% right to work fee and therefore be it resolved, the Medicine Root District requests the 2% right to work fee to be rescinded immediately. Motion.
Second.
I'm not. We don't have that resolution. Did you guys pass it up?
It's coming from the districts, I think.
But we still should have the documents in front of us. We're just now printing them, so. Mr. Chair, Davey has his hand up.
Councilman Poyer.
Aren't those two different ordinances? There's one for education, for the charter schools, and there's one for the Oglala Sioux Tribe. Are we talking both of them, one of them? And then, so we need an ordinance from the district, not a resolution. We're doing away with the ordinance.
Can we answer that?
Councilman Standing Soldier.
You know, out of respect for Medicine Root District, this has got to be looked at, that 2%. I mean, that's an ordinance and that's affecting a lot of areas, so it would be more fair to everybody involved because 2% affects the whole reservation. You know, and if we just chop it off at the knees, there's a process that we could probably do that is a lot more safer than just doing away with it immediately. Because I think, like I said, in all fairness to Medicine Root, I think we table this, take it back to the appropriate committee and discuss it there, then bring it back forward. That would be the, that would be finance. And that would be my motion.
Okay, so motion to table, the constituents, and take back to committee. and take back to committee for further discussion. Motion by Councilman Standing Soldier. Second by Councilman Dillon. Secretary, call for the vote.
Anna Halverson?
No.
David Kelly?
No.
Tyler Lunderman?
Yes.
Sonia Little Hawk Weston?
Ah.
Bo Little White Man?
No.
David Poyer?
Yes.
Julianne Spotted Bear? Lyle Weston?
Yes.
Jeremy Rosales?
No.
Norman Standing Soldier?
Yes.
Richard Greenwald Senior?
Yes.
Blaine Little Thunder?
Yeah, no.
Beef Randall?
No.
James Cross?
No.
Craig Dillon?
Yes.
Troy Little?
Yes.
George Dreamer Junior?
No.
Jackie Sears?
Uh huh.
Ten yes, eight no, motion carried. Uh just FYI, lunch is here and ready. Any other uh districts? No? Okay, so uh I don't know how you want to do this, you want to break for uh ciao now and uh yeah, it's gonna get cold here, so uh it's been ready for a bit here, so um, Councilman? Okay. All right, at this time, I'm going to turn it over to uh one of our district members, this Mr. Jake Yellowhorse.
Uh, Mendakiapi. It's an honor to be called upon to say the meal prayer for all our relatives that are near and far, that are underway here and that are wishing to be here.
Uh wopilaw. Okay, at this time, you know, elders, if you can make your way, uh we'll be serving on this one, this side to my right, to your left. Coming on this side, the kitchen is over here. Head to your left, left side of the gym. Over here. Yes, cafeteria is on the left side here. We'll resume in forty-five minutes.